I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Okay, Commissioner Dodge.
Here.
Commissioner Laborman.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have a presentation this afternoon on United Negro College Fund Workplace Giving Campaign, and it's the wrap-up, and I'm going to turn it over to Tom Kelly first.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice. So it's our pleasure once again to be able to present you with the United Negro College Fund Workplace Giving Campaign. You know, it's been our pleasure now for about the last eight or nine years to participate in this campaign with your approval, you know, as one of the county's official fundraising campaigns and workplace giving campaigns. We look forward to this campaign every February of each calendar year, and it gives our employees that opportunity to give back for a meaningful campaign that allows youth from our own community to have access to scholarships, to be able to go to colleges, universities of their choice, and we really appreciate that opportunity. Just a little bit about the campaign in summary. We had a variety of activities that make up the campaign. We try to look at how we can augment activities over the years and add a little bit here or come up with new ideas. So this year, some of our featured activities were the Silent Art Auction and other items as well in the auction. We also had our, one of our featured activities, the Dayton 500 Race for Education. We had our Dining to Donate where some of our area restaurants allow us to raise funds with the sale of meals. We had a mask-up for UNCF, which was new this year because of COVID, taking advantage of that as an opportunity this time. We had a pretzel sale, a mass pretzel sale for employees throughout the county. Love the Investment was part of our Valentine's Day raffle. So we had a sort of unique and varied set of activities to allow our staff to participate in any one of things that they'd like to do. A little bit more detail for our Silent Auction. We tried to have something for everyone. We had framed art auction or framed pictures, prints. We had, as you can see, some pottery items. We had some other kinds of things, like we had a ring doorbell and some other, what I would call pampering items, so to speak. So it was fun, and a lot of people took or participated and took advantage of the things that we had to auction off, and we raised some money with it. And then we had the Dayton 500, and we actually added a new event this year. So our overall winner for the Dayton 500, and the way this works is we have Hot Wheels elimination races for all four weeks of the month. And then we bring the first and second place winners from all four individual races together for an overall final championship race. So our overall champion for this year was Lori Drain from HSPD, and you can see her there with our unique trophy that we assembled for her. And then we added a new event this year, which was our Demolition Derby, and we came up with a creative way of doing a demolition derby, and that was a brand-new event, and the winner for that was Matt Gimperline, who is a BCC-IT slash homeless solutions employee. So he has his unique trophy as well. Then some of the other items that we talked about in the first slide, you can see we have our Valentine's Day raffle, our Dining to Donate, the pretzel sale, the mask-up, and then be a key part through keychains with the UNCF logo. So we, again, we try to have fundraising opportunities and provide something that we think anyone would like to participate in and, you know, just make it a fun event for everyone through the month of February. What we are pleased to announce to you today is that our overall fundraising efforts garnered $32,000 for the month of February. And that was made up of payroll deductions, online donations, cash and checks, and then we, this year, we had a combination of $27,000 that was raised by your own employees. And this year, we actually had a partner donation that was made by the Dayton Foundation in recognition of the work we were doing on behalf of UNCF. And the Dayton Foundation sent a donation directly to UNCF for $5,000 in partnership with us. So in total, we raised $32,000 this year for the campaign. So we're a little bit more than last year. We're again coming out of COVID, and we're getting back to the level that we had raised in prior years. So we want to take a moment to thank all of our employees, thank all of our departments throughout the county, everyone that participated in the campaign this year. Thank you, of course, for your support and all of the efforts that you all make. Michael for his support in the campaign and giving us that charge to keep going and make sure that we're getting the message out and doing all the education on the campaign. So, you know, it's, we treat it again as fundraising and making sure that everyone understands what the real mission is of the campaign. So again, with our thank you, just real quickly, I'd like to recognize our top five departments in giving this year. The Auditor's Office was actually the top county department, top county unit with a little over $5,800 in donations. Business Services was second with a little less than $5,400. Human Services Planning and Development, a little bit more than $2,700. The Adamus Board, just a little over $2,000. And then Job and Family Services at just less than $2,000. So those were the top five throughout the county this year. So, you know, it's, again, we're really happy with our fundraising, and we want to thank all of our employees, all of our departments, all of our elected officials, everyone that really gets involved and makes this a winning campaign, not just for us, but for the students that really deserve the scholarships and those opportunities.
Absolutely. Well, and as we know, when they win, then our community wins.
Yes. And so Jerry has a little bit about the scholarship question.
Yes, so thank you, Tom, and thank you and everyone else for the donations for the campaign as well. So we wanted to make sure that students understand how to apply for the scholarship because we raised the money because we want to give it away for them to be able to attend college. So this year is for high school seniors who are residents of Montgomery County. All students, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or religion, all students. Students must be planning to attend any two- or four-year college or university that's accredited. That's different than some of the, some of the other scholarships because it's a two-year. They can also use the scholarship for. Students must have a minimum of a 2.5 GPA. They must complete the free application for federal student aid, and we know that as FASPA. And this year, they eliminated the SA so that we don't have, you know, any barriers or getting the recommendation for counselors, is what I meant to say. And then they must complete the scholarship application. Very important that if students start and they feel like they're bumping into an issue with completing the information on the application, we're here to help and support. And then all must demonstrate an unmet financial need. And let me explain that a little bit because it's not just the economics of it. It's if you're going to college and you have additional need because you do not have scholarships or resources to pay for it, then you can apply for the scholarship, and if you're selected, you would be awarded then. And so the application deadline is May 19th. We want to make sure everybody understands the application deadline is May 19th. Here are two opportunities to reach the scholarship. The information is right there on the scholarship, how you apply and upload whatever information that they're requesting. And these were two of our awardees previously last year. I think we showed the video earlier this year when we started that campaign. Very thankful for our employees and the donations we received in order to help them with their college education as well.
And there we go, on questions. I have one. What's the average scholarship?
Oh, the scholarships range up to $2,000. So up to $2,000 is which was eligible. And this year, we'd like to give away all 15 scholarships, and then I can request more money from Mr. Colbert.
Commissioners, I'd like to say thank you for giving us an opportunity to drive this campaign. I'd also like to thank Tom, Jerry, and Steve. Steve gives us a great deal of flexibility with the program itself. Tom puts in a tremendous amount of time of his own personal time with the Hot Wheels, which is my favorite because I love Hot Wheels. It brings out the kid in all of us, but it makes it fun. And then Jerry handles all the logistics. We don't move without Jerry. She makes sure that we're doing it right, and we're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. I'd also like to thank all of our elected officials and our department heads across the county. They have all been very much supportive, and coming off of COVID, to hit this kind of mark is really, really spectacular. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And so do we do the presentation now? Do we have a big check?
Yes.
For taking picture with Commissioners. Big check.
Lee, would you like to say anything?
Well, again, I want to thank the Commissioners for their leadership and Michael for his leadership, and Tom does an amazing job along with Jerry Piggies. We are just so gracious and humble for the support of more than 3,000 employees here in Montgomery County to support the efforts that United Negro College Fund is working on to help students go to and through any accredited college they want to, especially after COVID and all that this area's been through. This is a great opportunity for students to continue their education so they can be future leaders in this community and around the country. And we know that these have been very, very difficult and trying times, but we really, really appreciate your support. Montgomery County is again this year our number-one workplace partner, and we humbly thank you very much. Jerry Piggies is amazing.
Montgomery County is the number-one workplace campaign.
That's amazing.
And Jerry Piggies is amazing.
Yes.
We know that.
We know.
All right, take a picture.
Want to come down and take a picture?
Sure.
Thank you.
I know.
Wasn't thinking about going there. And for our basis. One, two, one. You're doing your part. Thank you. Oh, thanks, Carolyn.
Thank you. We like prizes.
It's halfway on. All right, well, that was wonderful. Our next item of business is County Engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have three resolutions today. The first is Resolution 22-754, to amend the rules and regulations for permission to work within the county right-of-way to govern the placement and installation of utilities and other structures upon, along, or beneath the designated county roads, and authorize the county engineer to administer said rules and regulations and issue permits in compliance with the same. 755 is to amend the rules and regulations governing the construction of approaches and driveways from county roads, and the placement and construction of water pipelines by abutting property owners within the right-of-way of county roads, and authorize the county engineer to administer said rules and regulations and issue permits in compliance with the same. And 756 is to release the cash bond for the estates of Paragon, Section 2, Washington Township, in the amount of $1,511.25.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 757, submit a grant to the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office of Criminal Justice Services Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the Regional Agencies Narcotics and Gun Enforcement Range Task Force in an amount of $80,000.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Juvenile Court.
Good afternoon, thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of Juvenile Court and Anthony Canizzi, Administrator Judge, we have one item, that's 22-0758, authorize a continuation grant agreement with the Montgomery County Juvenile Court Foundation for support of a volunteer coordinator for the CASA program in an amount not to exceed $30,000 through December 31, 2023.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Monday Community Correctional Institution.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Monday Community Correctional Institution, we have Resolution 759, authorize an agreement with Global Tel Link Corporation to install, operate, and maintain the inmate telephone equipment through November 13, 2025 at no cost to the county.
I always like to move for approval when it's no cost to the county. I move for approval, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab.
Under Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, we have Resolution 760, submit a grant application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety for the 2022 American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, for the funding of DNA and drug chemistry equipment and supplies in the amount of $608,652.16. We also have Resolution 761, accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, for the FY 2021 Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grant Program in the amount of $50,607.07.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Michael, is that some of the grants that they were talking about yesterday when we were at the crime lab?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all starting to come down, both from the state and then the coroner will have some dollars from us also.
Great.
County Coroner.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Coroner, we have Resolution 762, accept a grant from the National Institute on Drug Abuse as a subrecipient to Arizona State University for counterfeit pharmaceuticals research in the amount of $33,044.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Law Library.
Under the Law Library, we have Resolution 763, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the statewide consortium of county law library resource boards to accept a grant in the amount of $5,000.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator.
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's Office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on May 3, 2022, Resolution 764, approval of bills, and Resolution 765, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for your consideration today. The first is 766, is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's Office. 767, authorize a price agreement with WDTN-TV for cable and digital advertising services for the Veterans Services Commission through April 30, 2023, with options to extend. 768 extends the price agreement with Ground Personnel Services Incorporated for temporary staffing services for various county departments through May 31 of 2023. The next two resolutions selects bids and authorizes agreements through December 31 of 2022. The first is 769 with Fredco Industrial Piping Incorporated for the Administration Building Boilers 1 and 3 Replacement Project at their lowest and best bid of $224,360. And 770 is with Starco Incorporated for the CPC DMCC Boilers Replacement Project at their lowest and best bid of $893,250. The next three resolutions approve Courthouse Square vendors license agreements for rental space on Courthouse Square through December 31 of 2022. 771 is with Acrees Hog Wild Barbecue, 772 with Diamond Acrees, and 773 with El Diablo Grill. And that is all.
Okay. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Environmental Services.
Thank you, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 774, authorize an agreement with Milcon Concrete, Inc., for construction of the Bayside and Barrett Water Main Replacement Project Phase 1 at their lowest and best bid of $1,949,150 through November 6, 2023. 775, amend the agreement with GPD Group for consulting services for construction of the Terrace Villa Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project by extending the term through July 31, 2022. 776, approve the plan, specifications, and estimated cost of $135,715, and solicit bids for construction of the sanitary sewer facilities for the RV Dump Station. And Resolution 777, accept the official check for the Redwood Van Delia Development Phase 1 in the amount of $188,067.30.
Move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Human Services.
Thank you again. And under Job and Family Services, I have a Resolution 778, which will authorize submission of the Access Visitation Grant Application to the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services in an amount not to exceed $66,233 through June 30 of 2023. And then we also need to authorize two agreements for substitute care services through March 31 of 2024. 779 is with One Trust Group Home LLC, and 780 is with All For You 126 Incorporated.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Business Services.
Under Business Services, Commissioners, we have, under Community and Economic Development, Resolution 781, authorize a purchase from Geo Buyers Sun Holding LLC, DBA Buyers Ford, for one 2022 Ford Escape and one 2022 Ford Explorer in the amount not to exceed $56,974. We have Resolution 782, rescind Resolution 22-750 dated May 3, 2022, amending an Economic Development Government Edge Equity Agreement with the City of Union. Then we have Resolution 783, approve the Spring 2022 Economic Development Project Funding Recommendations for the Economic Development Government Edge Program. Commissioners, 782, we will actually bring back on at a later date. We just have to modify some of the language, and we'll bring that back on. So it's really a correction. We have to rescind the old one, make the necessary corrections, and then bring it back on. So it's coming back.
Okay. There were some great projects. Only five, but they were all very good, and so we're looking forward to that.
We are fortunate and thankful, Commissioners. The extra dollars that you gave us through the budget process has allowed us to bring on more projects and to fund everything that comes forth, and we're getting some great projects. So thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, comments by citizens. We have one individual, Greg West. You have, give your address, and you have three minutes.
Greg West, 4473 Corundu Avenue, Dayton, Ohio. Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Administrator. I'm coming to you today asking what has been done. I know it's gone on two years since systemic racism was addressed as a public health issue. I haven't seen anything as far as any policies or programs that have been brought forward as far as like, you know, what are we doing to combat that? So that's why I'm coming here, you know, for some of the concerned citizens over in my section of the town and everything like that. We'd like to know what is being done other than just saying that it's a public health issue, and that's it.
I'll start. Jerry's gone, but we've done a lot, Greg, and, you know, we've invested many dollars, and I think Michael probably, off the top of his head, can roll through some of them. But thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thanks, Greg, for bringing that. We just had a presentation on this a few weeks ago, and we do this pretty much annually. We try to do it about once every 10 months or so, a little bit less than a year. But the county commission and administration has invested well over $2 million in the West Dayton. Of course, you know, we built the new center where the oddies left the West Town community. We actually put a new multimillion-dollar center in that space. We, was it just last week, Tyler, we just had the diverse vendor outreach where, when you look at the county's overall spend, we are almost a billion-dollar operation, and we are reaching out to all types of vendors, vendors of color, women-owned vendors, minority-owned vendors, veteran-owned vendors. Our goal is to make sure that we increase our overall spending power with businesses that need our assistance, and we want their assistance, and their products and their goods and services. So we want to be a partner with them. Different than most of the resolutions on racism being a public health crisis, Greg, we took a different approach. The commission and myself, we decided to put our money where our mouths are. We decided to go into the community and invest in business. We decided to go in and put a multimillion-dollar center in the Northwest Dayton Corridor. We use our CARESAC dollars to give businesses across the county dollars that they need to help through the pandemic. We are also looking at racism as it relates to our hiring practices. We want to make sure that we open the doors to people of all walks of life. So we just had a major job fair, and we had hundreds of people come out so that we know that we're reaching out to different communities. Our Youth Works Program is the number-one Youth Works Program in the state, where we are paying to employ youth from all walks of life, plus the workers' compensation for those youth, to get them, to make sure they're not on the streets anywhere, to make sure that they're coming in, getting a partnership with an employer, getting a job experience, but also, Greg, they have an opportunity for mentorship. So these are the things that we are doing. We're trying to do our part with the pieces that we control, and I commend the Commissioners for really putting meat around the resolution. We have about, if you look at our resolution, Greg, we have about 11 things in our resolution, and we actually have them tracked to make sure that we are doing those things. So I'll make sure I invite you to the next time that we do a report out so that you can hear the good things that we are doing. And again, I thank the Commissioners for their support.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. We also can get you the, a copy of the, yeah, the presentation that was made. Michael, you referred to the Northwest, but the investment, we're making Trotwood Courts in Trotwood is big, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're... Sometimes we don't, we don't get things out enough for people to see it, and so thank you for bringing it up. We think we do, but we don't always do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks for bringing it to our attention, Greg.
All right, comments by the County Administrator.
All right, well, thank you, Commissioners. There's a couple, two or three comments I'd like to say. First, I wanted to mention that our youth job fair is set for tomorrow at Day Air Ballpark from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Again, our youth job fair is set for tomorrow at Day Air Ballpark from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And this event is for young adults ages 17 to 24. We have 53 employers and training providers registered for this event. It is an excellent opportunity for young people, and Greg, I know you know a lot of people in the community, so make sure you tell everybody, this is a great opportunity for young people to talk with employers and to learn about the available positions out there so we can get our young people working. So please come out again, Day Air Ballpark, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Youth Job Fair. Also, Commissioners, I wanted to thank you, our purchasing team, Tyler and Kyle, they did an excellent job at the diverse vendor outreach last Thursday. We had 34 vendors show up, women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses. They all showed up. We had our team there, our purchasing team, our contracting team, to register and get them prepared to be county vendors, because that's the first step. We want you to be a vendor of the county. So we had the team there. We really enjoyed the networking. It was just an excellent time. So we picked up some new vendors that we can partner with. And Kyle and his team did a fantastic job, and we have another outreach coming this fall. So we're trying to do these kind of quarterly, Commissioners, to reach out. And then finally, I'd like to let you all know that this week is National Nurses Week, May 6 through the 12th. And May 6 was National Nurses Day. The theme this year is "We Answer the Call." I'd like to give a shout-out. I'd like to give a shout out to our great nurses that we have at Stillwater Center. They do a fantastic job. We're blessed to have them there to take care of our most needy residents. And I'd also like to give a shout out to both my wife and my daughter.
Yes.
Have two nurses in my family.
That's right.
And I do whatever they tell me to do. But thanks to all our nurses that serve in Montgomery County, at our hospital networks, in our nursing homes, and across our community. So thank you Commissioners, that's all I have.
Thank you Michael.
Well, I would definitely echo that because I grew up in a family of nurses. I broke the mold, what can I say? But having lived with, in a family, my grandmother, my aunt, my mother, I know what a wonderful, important, challenging job that is. So, and just having, and by the way, today is my one-year anniversary of my first new knee. And so I was the beneficiary of wonderful healthcare nurses, doctors, and everyone. So we should all, if you know a nurse, they've been through a lot. These, they're always through a lot, but with the pandemic, it's really been a stress beyond stress. And so please, any nurse you know, neighbor, friend, family, reach out to them and tell them thank you for the wonderful jobs they do every day. Also, last week, I had a proclamation that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, as you know. And we're going to be talking about it all month. And this really is an important issue to focus on because so many people are truly not comfortable talking about it, but a lot of people are impacted by that and they don't know where to go to get help. And we really need to, we're coming together, working with Adamus, and we are sharing resources. And we're asking each of our employees to make a pledge. There's a pledge card to be part of the program to beat the stigma of mental health because we, it needs to be treated like physical health. And you should not stay away. You should not be afraid to admit when you're having problems. And recognizing that is the first step and then getting help is the second step. And we are offering, I have more than one, and I know we all have them, these green bracelets say "Beat the Stigma." These are being offered to all of our employees to wear this month. And I've been wearing mine so far. And I, one of the great things, not only does it remind us that we have to be conscious of it, our language, just how we refer to things, but also it's a great conversation starter because somebody's going to ask, what's that bracelet on your, you know, wrist? What's that all about? And that gives each of us a chance to, you know, help break down those walls. And we do have great resources. I can tell you that on a project, I interviewed counties across the state and Montgomery County is blessed with a lot of resources. No, we don't have enough. We always have to keep working to get more, but we are blessed to have more than some other places. And so if you know anyone has mental health issues or substance abuse issues, they should reach out. The local Health Now app or the 24/7 Crisis Care Helpline can connect them with behavioral health providers. And I know that there's a lot of work being done on this issue beyond May. So we will continue to make everyone aware of that. But get your bracelet, sign your pledge if you're a county employee. But everyone, let's all work together and really break down this stigma and bring people together and let's have a better tomorrow for everyone.
Well, we need to talk about it.
Yes.
And with friends and family, with our children. And right now, I think one of the, it's all a crisis, but the children with mental health issues is skyrocketing. And I don't know if anybody saw a portion of 60 Minutes the other night. It was heartbreaking to hear this young man talk about, you know, wanting to kill himself and feeling like he, because he'd been isolated. And Children's Hospital, Dayton Children's, is doing an excellent job, but forward-thinking and really focusing on this. They've had their campaign of "On our sleeves," you know, "Wear it on your sleeve and tell everybody about it." So we just can't get the word out enough and talk about awareness and how important this is, especially now through the pandemic and, you know, financial crisis. So.
You know, I think one of the things, you know, it's okay not to be okay.
Right.
There's nothing the matter with that. And so reach out.
That's right.
Talk to your teacher, your parents, you know, just if you know someone that has some problems, reach out.
Well, our own employees. I mean, I think it's been stressful and we all know that. And we do have our employee care that people can, but also reach out to local health.
Yep.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
And, you know, they often say it just takes having one person you can turn to. So that person needs to be open to it and not to solve it. Nobody's asking anyone to solve it. In fact, that would probably be a bad thing to do. They need to get into the care of someone who really knows what they're doing. But be that trusted person that doesn't shut someone down and guide them to the resources. Because you could actually.
Exactly. Guide them to the resources and, you know, there's so many options now. Some people like face-to-face, some people like virtual. And there's a lot of virtual opportunities right now. You see it all the time, you know, different groups all over. So, yeah.
Absolutely. So important.
It is. So, I know we like to take care of our furry friends, at least we all do. And we, county will be providing free vaccines for dogs on May the 26th. And vaccines prevent deadly diseases and, you know, kennel cough and parvo and distemper and so many things. And we do have limited quantities of the vaccinations, so you need to call to get an appointment and that would be to 937-898-4457. Our Animal Resource Center is also offering rabies vaccines for $15 and microchips for 20. And both of those, I think, are a necessity. You must be a Montgomery County resident and that's a great price, by the way. $15 for rabies, amazing. Thunder will be there soon. And dogs must have their current license to be serviced at our ARC. So if you have a current license, you can purch, if you don't have a current license, and I can't imagine anybody that ever listens to us wouldn't have their license, but it happens. You can purchase it at that event. And again, the number is 898-4457. That's it. Yep.
Well, last week, we were all at the Western Regional Water Reclamation Facility and we basically broke ground for our SMART project. And this project is the largest that we've ever invested in, over $65 million. Though the price tag is large, the investment is necessary. Our infrastructure is aging and this investment should ensure another 50 years of uninterrupted service to our residents. Thank you Matt. I think it was a very successful event and thank you to the, our, the whole Environmental Services Department for all the work that everyone put into this project. A little brisk that day, but.
A little chilly.
A little chilly. No, but it was great.
It was.
Big turnout, so.
It was great seeing all our employees there coming out.
Exactly.
Nice.
So, and finally, I want to read a proclamation and this is for National Fentanyl Awareness Day. And, you know, as we all know, fentanyl is a very, very serious, serious drug. It's an illegal drug. And because it's so cheap, so many of our bad, bad people are putting them into other synthetic opioids. So we have to be very careful. We want to make this very much aware to everybody because today, Tuesday, May 10th, it's been designated as National Fentanyl Awareness Day because we want to raise awareness regarding this drug. It's odorless, tasteless, cheap, and extremely potent. It has been involved in more deaths of Americans under 50 than any other cause of death, including heart disease, cancer, and accidents. And whereas nationally overdosed deaths linked to synthetic opioids like fentanyl tripled among teenagers in the last 10 years. It's just awful. So we're going, we just want to raise awareness of this and the three Commissioners have signed this proclamation, so pay attention, pay attention.
Well, you know, and it's, it's not just opioids too. Read about the Ohio State students, you know. They thought it was Adderall and, you know, yeah. And then they, they killed them.
Yeah.
And, you know, I always tell my kids, don't take anything you don't know where it came from.
Exactly.
Period. I mean, that just, that's just horrifying. But sometimes when you hear all these fentanyl stories, you're like, how, how, why, first of all? Why would you lay something with fentanyl, right? It just, it's going to kill people. And we just, everybody just needs to stay away from it. Stay far away from it. And you have something I failed to add, so.
Yeah, so we just want to give kudos to our Human Resource Department because they've really done a great job putting all this information for the Mental Health Awareness Month together. It's no small feat. And I know that they are going around from, you know, department to department, making themselves readily available. I stopped by when they were at the Juvenile Court Center. But you can go to the website. This is more for our employees, but anyone looking could look at it as well and go to, but for our employees, it's all in one place. You can go to mcbenefits.org and then just click on the green ribbon at the top of the page and it'll just open up a world of information. So if you're not at the point where you're willing to share with someone else, you can do it on your own. So we don't want anything to stand in the way of finding the help that you need. All right?
One last thing.
Sure.
Is this Erica's last in person?
Pardon?
No. In person. Next week we're virtual. Is it Erica's last? Just one more?
No, she has another two weeks. She has another two weeks.
Forget it. Never mind, it was on our payroll actions.
Yeah, no, no.
I'm trying to push her out the door.
I know. No.
Okay, never mind.
Can I hear Erica?
Forget I ever said that. Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
That's okay. The next Montgomery County Commission meeting will be held next Tuesday, May 17 at 1:30 p.m. And it will be virtual, so it will not be in person. So look for information on our website or a Facebook live stream to watch it next week. And so do I have a motion to adjourn? And I believe we are going to have the viewing of the Astoria Road Culvert Replacement Project in German Township after this adjourns.
Okay, move to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.